Um, ask your fucking allegiance, please.
United States of America, and to the Republic, the which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't want to go through that, so we'll go right now. Um, meeting of allegiance, my here a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion to adopt tonight's agenda, December nineteenth.
Any, any comments or questions by the board?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, December twelfth and December fourteenth, emergency budget meeting was on the fourteenth. Right here, a motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Road report?
Joel's gonna give it tonight, so. After nineteen years and forty-eight days, I'll pass the.
Alright, so, um, last Ron mentioned at the last meeting, um, our international tandem is that Deluris, uh, he found out today that's in the diagnosis stage, and we don't really have a timeline on that, but they are tearing it apart to find out, and they're leaning towards BDRP. But if that's the truth, that'll be great, because that should be under warranty, so.
The old international tandem.
We've got a couple of newer employees, uh, so last week, we, we prepped the guys for the upcoming storm with the third Friday and Saturday storm. Uh, take them around, show them plow routes and stuff, Ron helped with that. And, um, you know, kind of get them to speed quickly as to what we're gonna do and what we're gonna do with. We, uh, Ron got me a contact with V-Trans, and after a few different phone calls, we were able to get hold of an agency of transportation and secured a V-Trans truck to be used until Wednesday. Uh, also working on trying to extend that, so we can get through this next storm as well. Um, I'm sure a lot of people are wondering about, um, how the storm went and why it was so delayed to get the roads done. We had, uh, it started out cutting our way in, we had trees and lines down everywhere, major delays. It was, it was just rough, and then, uh, we had a truck break. We had our Dodge, which is our primary salt, salting root truck.
That's one ton.
That went down, the one ton went down. Um, we were able to get ahold of Alan Gunn of the village, and he, uh, loaned us a three-quarter ton pickup, which only has a plow, but that's better than nothing. Um, Western Star, the twenty-fourteen Western Star broke a main leaf spring, so that was out for the count. And, uh, I was able to get ahold of, um, Hampton, Tyler McClure from Hampton, and, uh, got a six-wheeler for us to use, uh, and we're good to use that for quite a while, because that's their spare truck, and they don't have an extra person to even run it. So unless something goes with theirs, we've got that as a backup.
They charge you so much a day or something?
They're not charging, they're considering it as, um, services, you know, just helping themselves.
Policy data. Like what we have.
Yeah.
So they.
Right, they've gotten the pinches before people help them, and, uh, you know, they, they understand what it's like to be down. It's pretty serious stuff, so.
We'll have to send a letter to them.
Yeah, uh, I, I also extended the, you know, if, if we can do something within reason to, to help as well, if you get potentially, be happy to do that, because this is, this is huge. So, um, the, the V-Trans truck was not able to take sand, so that really put up an extended delay on getting around to places, because you, you can't go up a hill if you can't stand, because if you don't make it up the hill, you're not coming down very good. The V-Trans truck, uh, the wing broke, that was able to be fixed at no expense due to extra parts over the years. We got a treat, um, we also got, that same truck got stuck, so we had to get, get him out, um, because there was, there was trees on wires, and there was absolutely nowhere to turn around.
Repaired our truck, Dicky, did you do that? You repair that?
No. Kevin, Kevin was able to fix that.
Kevin was?
The, the wing on the V-Trans truck. We still have a lot of ongoing brush to clean out. It's, it's probably gonna be a couple of days worth of everything else, and I'm trying to.
Green Mountain Power, let's get help from Canada.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear back from Rob Bailey from AOT to see if we can keep that V-Trans truck. Uh, it's still kind of open there, otherwise Wednesday it's gotta go back, and I'm not really sure where else we're gonna turn to for.
Didn't we just put transportation in that, uh, rail?
No, we changed, uh, they redid, um, some of the wiring harnesses, because it was corroded and changed the solenoid on the transmission.
So, our apologies for the delays and for the people that were, that were stuck in. The entire crew worked very hard and didn't complain, and we put in a lot of hours to, to get, to get everything done to the best of our ability with what we had.
Good training.
And, um, and we'd also like to thank, there is multiple people, not even sure who, but by the time, on the second day that we got to some of these roads, some people had used their own personal vehicles and did some plowing, and that was pretty outstanding, those people to take it into their own hands and help out where they could. My only thoughts with all this happening is that maybe we should consider securing a couple extra. I'm not necessarily saying that we need to buy two new extra trucks, I don't, I don't wanna spend everything, um, but I do think we should consider having something as a backup, like this happens again.
We're gonna talk about that.
It could have been a lot worse.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that on budgets tonight, what, what we gotta start looking at.
Actually, Green Mountain Power, just before I left, was on, and they said it was the worst since nineteen eighty. It's hard to believe, but it's strong, what it did for taking down trees and power lines.
It, it was, it was rough, I mean, we had Green Mountain Power calling us and saying, hey, can you get into Griffin Road? You know, this isn't allowed, we've been here to get power going. So, well, we try to come in from our end, which would be Gormtown, access off of Lewis Road, and right out of the gate, there's communication lines down on live hot wires, and I won't touch it, and I wouldn't ask anybody else in the truck. So, there was a lot of challenges, if anybody has any questions or any comments, concerns, that's basically all we got, no more.
Well, nothing like stepping right into the fire.
Yeah, I guess so, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Responding as best you can. The way it is.
Yeah.
Um, Green Mountain was on our road, we were at the top like fifteen hour, but they came, they were very gracious about the road on ours. But now I know why someone had looked with blinder, because they couldn't speak English. We were talking, you were up there, yes, and I was like, and he was like, thank you so much, I mean, I'm like, oh.
Because they were from Canada?
Yeah, so I don't know what they did not.
Come and stop, you know, they were white, yeah, yeah, holes.
Yeah.
Convo.
They were called in, it's kind of like, I didn't know if I'd, uh, who's emergency management that they were coming in.
There's about five lined up right here, I believe it was Saturday evening, I don't know, the last few days have been poor or something.
Very friendly, very nice, I mean, they did a great job, but they were saying the same thing, like, the road looks good.
Very heavy, heavy smell.
There was a number of accidents on major highways, thirty.
Three poles down on Terry, that was, that was amazing, I was like, I've never seen that one before, I was like, wow, like, three poles out.
Yeah, and that was a fiber optics.
Took forever to, yeah, get fixed, but anyways.
Anybody have any questions for Joel?
Thank you, Joel, and thank you to crew, make sure you thank Dicky and the crew.
Absolutely.
Well, Ron, this is the third road form, and since I'm here now.
Well, let's see, Frank did thirty-two years, Joe did twenty-eight.
Joe was there when I came on.
Yeah, twenty-eight, and then, like I say, I'm just, I'm just nine years, forty-eight days, just counting.
Just a pop.
That's right.
Thank you.
Smart enough to go.
Just remember, standard answer is, is Dicky's fault.
I didn't say it, I didn't, I didn't forget, um, I respect honestly, but, uh, the, the twenty-fourteen Western Star with the broken leaf spring is going down to Westminster Patriot, where the truck comes from, uh, first thing tomorrow morning, and they were swamped, but they're, they understand our predicament, and they're, as soon as the parts come in, they're going in the truck, and we're gonna get them back, they're gonna try to, try to have us stuck for Friday, because they understand.
The spring is hooked in.
That's definitely an advantage to buying the Western Star, I think, because they got, they got to get service. Drone's not working.
And this is gonna concern me for the town of Polkley, if we lose the V-Trans truck, what's gonna happen with our next storm until we get the, uh, international back?
If we lose it, um, we, we can put salt in any of the trucks, I cleared that with Hampton, to make sure that they're, they're okay with us running salt through that truck, and they're, they're good to go without.
Alright.
And we could also put it in Dicky's newest truck as well, if we have to. That's absolutely a last resort, because the salt, you know, yeah.
We'll have to clean it up, Jerry.
Good. How many hours?
We're really.
Thank you, how many hours do you think you guys are out there on this storm, this far?
Yeah, I, honestly, I haven't even added it up, yeah, but it's.
Twenty hours a day?
Uh, yeah, probably, or even more than that, where we got all that. Almost five, five AM to midnight, Saturday, I believe. And yesterday, we worked, yesterday, we worked, uh, six to noon. Hopefully, yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, it was like, had to work a while when it came down.
Yeah, we thought we were in this big, because we, we prepped everything, you know, Thursday night, the best we could, left some salt down on all the blacktops, so it could brine overnight and everything. They, they did scrape off well for how it went, had all the added unforeseeable events.
They did a great job, so, okay, thank you.
Twenty-five hours in two days. Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
No.
Alright. Manager's report, um, it's a good jump to, um, Katrina Davenport with the Polkley Rescue Squad, you got it? Um, I, on, in the pile there, she sent me something late this afternoon, Eric, um, part of some last weeks, and.
Oh, yeah. Um, well, the one I sent back in November pretty much explains what we're asking for. We want to go from fourteen to twenty-eight, I'll leave the capital. Um, this, as we done, if not, we won't be able to hire more people. I'm just gonna live with fourteen, fifteen bucks now. Um, by raising the per capita, we'd be able to get more people up tonight in rescue, this year's been rough. Um, and by having that extra income, we can have seven days to be covered. The time employees will work forty hours instead of fifty, sixty, seventy hours, and nights, um, we can hopefully start helping out. It is a jump, however, it's still not as high as our neighboring town. Fairhaven's going from forty-eight dollars per capita to fifty-one dollars per capita next year, so if I ask under twenty-eight is, is a jump, but it's, it's not as bad as it could be, I suppose. Um, it's kind of hard to hear you.
I'm sorry.
I don't wanna yell. Um, as you can see in the financial reports, I mean, we're slowly having a net loss bigger and bigger every single year. So the prices of everything are going up. We just, we have to compensate for it.
Do we have people that are interested on joining, and, and like that, if the wages are higher?
Yes, we've hired three people off the top of my head that I think of that have come down, ridden with us for a day. Um, love the environment, love the building, are happy with it, and then I mentioned starting pay, and they're like, okay, we'll think about it, and I never do. Um.
Have you had much information coming in from the legislature? Because I had some new updated information on the EMS and what they're hoping to do for twenty twenty-three, and get more, um, reimbursements for Medicaid and so forth, and I know EMS is a prime target for them.
Yeah, Medicare, Medicaid, we get about twelve cents to the dollar, um, for Medicare, Medicaid, it's, yeah. So if we charge about twelve hundred dollars a call, average, we might get around three hundred dollars in revenue in from Medicare, Medicaid, New York State's even lower. Um, right now, we've got the, read a letter, a status reporting, so starting January first to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, um, we have to submit all this information that we've collected over the years and submit it for the government from Medicare, Medicaid, in hopes of getting a five percent increase in our revenue. If it's done wrong, or if it's not submitted, we get penalized. Um, so, every agency in Vermont is, is going through this. Our NPI number just got drawn. Um, so, we're hoping to get more from Medicare, Medicaid, but it's not gonna be a significant increase. Um, our main revenue, besides town funding, are transfers, but it's not fair for us to send an ambulance on a transfer, say, from the hospital to a nursing home, and take him out of service when taxpayers are paying for the ambulance for nine-one-one services. Hopefully, in the long run, we could get a couple crews on, and then we could have that revenue, a bigger revenue coming in.
How many people do you think this would, uh, increase? And if we go from forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty to eighty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty, which would be your twenty-eight dollars per capita?
We could get at least another two to four people, we could do another, but we can make one. I just hired a part-time person in October, I could bump into people sign, and we could have pretty young employees that could cover shifts not being covered and nights. Right now, we only have four volunteers, two of them are actually active, so we can't really rely on that. But having more people available to cover, so if I hire two more people, they can cover the day, I don't mind bumping into them. There's, there's flexibility in that. Um, now, we only have two full-time people, two part-time, one person of the escorting alone, but, um. Because for the most of the year, it was only two full-time employees. Been for a while, they're giving me one full-time employee.
This is, this is, it, it does show like you're going down.
Is Dicky?
Stand back there.
Sure. What was on?
Is there any, like, big expenses coming up, like new socks, new whatever, that's down the road?
Both are doing well. Um, we do need to replace the stretcher, March, April this year. Um, the one we have now won't be able to be inspected. Uh, in itself, a used refurbished, refurbished stretcher will cost between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars.
What would happen? This is not for us, because you're getting, you have your own board, your own LLC.
Yeah.
Have you presented this to your LLC?
Yeah.
How do they feel about it? Because what I'm getting at is, would it be feasible for them to think about consolidating into our fire department building with your rescue squad, and selling that building and generating revenue to help out your squad?
Um, the building itself doesn't cost us anything, it's the fuel for the ambulances, the payroll, medical equipment, medications, our main insurance, it's a huge expense.
I'm just thinking of other.
The building really doesn't cost us much. Um, heating fuel, I think this year it's in there, it's about a little four thousand dollars to feed it for the year.
So that would be out if we were consolidated into an electrical bill? All that stuff would be right into one building here in Polkley, into the fire station. Just something to think about for the, for the future, because your numbers are going down drastically. And, and, um, you know, it, it, it is going up, even, you want to propose that you go up to eighty-four, eighty-four thousand, five, sixty. I'm just thinking of, how can we help the town taxpayers, the town of Polkley, save a, a little bit of money on things that, I mean, a six thousand here, a four thousand here, a five thousand here, that adds up quickly.
Yeah, I would say the building by itself for a year is easily up to ten, easily.
Get heat it and maintain it?
Internet, Wi-Fi, yeah. Um, like I said, the building doesn't cost us anything, it's payroll and insurance and the equipment.
Well, I'm just thinking, that's ten thousand, and all that would come, if they did consider. Have you ever thought, have you ever talked to the, to the LLC, the people on your board, to consider maybe looking at that possibility? How, are they receptive to it at all?
They are against it.
They are against it.
And it was brought up numerous times over the last, a lot of real, I've been in the position for five, six years.
Okay.
Um, and every time, it's a no-go, only because it really, the building doesn't cost anything.
What's the propane, is that for the building?
Yeah.
That's fifty-two hundred dollars.
That's probably, that's radiate heat with the square footage of the building.
And we're just thinking of these fifty-two hundred, with your electric and all of that, that's, you know, it's ten thousand bucks, it's consolidated into one building, that's all we're looking at.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't, they just, I don't know, and it's, it's hard for me not to conceive, you know, not to look at saving our town, you know.
In the village.
In the village, you know, yeah, the whole community, yes, um, just looking at different options.
Yeah, um.
But that's, you know, I don't mean to press, but that's just the way we're here.
Yeah.
For everybody in the town. Yeah, I mean, the rescue squad also does the village too, to Terry's point, but we're just looking at, uh, other options that we could look at to try and save some money. I don't know if they, um, would be opposed to rethinking that over or not.
Um, I don't think so, but there'd also have to be a lot of stuff under the fire department too, you'd have to add on to it, you'd have to add both rooms. Um, there'd be a lot of money to build on to that kitchen term, to compensate, and say ten thousand dollars at most, it's a barely.
No, I, I understand that, that's something we would have, I'm just thinking of in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, the main thing is we pay around, well, it's in there, around, this is only to December first, we still have a month of December.
Yeah.
About thirty thousand dollars in insurance, we pay about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for payroll. Um, e- equipment, just the stretcher alone, or parts and pieces on the rig, um, for the ambulances to replace medications, equipment.
Yeah, that's all, all right, yes.
It's just fuel oil for rigs.
Yeah.
I mean, just, everything's, that's, the main ones is payroll, insurance, any of that.
What's the loan balance, is that on the building?
That's our new ambulance, our two thousand nineteen ambulance.
Okay, so two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, it was brand new in two thousand nineteen.
So you still have fifty-five on that?
Yeah.
So how, how many years do you get out of the ambulance?
In this town? Um, probably at least ten to fifteen.
Fifteen years?
Yeah. We don't, between our call volume and how we treat them, they last pretty long.
Okay, are the town funding for Melton Springs and Timoth, are they based on per capita, or how, how are they?
Middletown is not, we're adjusting that next year with Middletown, because our call volume in Middletown, and their census is lower, um, we want to cover a handful of towns. They've been at that price for years, because it's literally less than twelve houses that we cover. Um, so, I mean, what we should. Is that the middle town is next year's, next year's.
That's next year, yeah.
And it looks like we maybe net around five thousand dollars with a thrift shop, with verse, income versus expenses?
Yeah, and that fluctuates year to year, because they've also been short on volunteers this year. And that revenue goes into Polkley, because not a number of corporations. Um, it helps, it's saved our buck this year, like that, the thrift shop and income. And this does not, uh, accounts do not reflect the, uh, the second half of the town funding that I just picked up a day or two after the tour.
What was that, what'd you say?
The town funding, the second half of our town funding.
Does it reflect the, uh, subscription?
No, subscriptions totally.
Oh.
It's.
How much you, how much you get out of that?
Um, well, I think we're up to seventeen thousand this year. Between fifteen and eighteen is our normal average on subscriptions, they fluctuate year to year. Um, that's a huge help.
That's not reflecting in her?
It is, it's not.
Top page one?
Yeah.
The top, the top one.
Seventeen thousand.
Okay, yep.
So that, that first page, it's on the top, it's our revenue coming in for this year.
Here's a sorry subject, Terry, dispatching services, fifty-six hundred bucks, how much is that gonna go up? That would just break the town policy, that's just ludicrous.
Well, you're, you're through Washington.
Yes, they're still, they're gonna, they won't stay with Washington.
Yes, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Stay with Washington County.
They're talking.
So really, you're gonna beat that first.
Yeah, I know, this, my hair won't turn any whiter than this.
I know Fairhaven's part of the state dispatch, and they're looking at upwards to, I think it was twenty-eight to thirty-two thousand dollars a year to pay for state dispatch. So.
Yeah.
What we pay for Washington County, even with the gradual increase over the next five years, we can't beat that price for dispatch, and we're an amazing dispatcher, so, so, that's, we can't lose that.
We just hope that the state allows us to stay.
Yeah, um, we should, um, I did attach to what Washington County sent me for numbers. Only as a proud, as funny, but like I said, this year is, I'm pretty rough.
Um, this year's been rough on everybody, with inflation and stuff, we just, oh, we're busy.
But these numbers reflect, this was sent to me, um, they're observing us, they don't want to drop us, but if we don't, if it starts picking up call volume, which we have in the last two months.
Okay.
Um, we might drop maybe two or three calls at most a week now.
An increase from this to eighty-four, five would help that too, wouldn't it?
To cover calls, so Washington doesn't, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So Washington doesn't try us there.
Yeah, because if that's the case, we have to stay, stay as more expensive and not as good as.
Yeah, that's, that's almost a no-brainer, when you go with dispatch.
Well, they're on a point of admission terms, but, but I'm hearing is that most of the calls can answer, but I can't even cast it, um, and, and, so, they can't do any more than what they got to make, what they're gonna get.
Hmm.
So.
This year, like I said, it's been hard this year. We haven't had the issues we have this year. Um, we had three months where we were lucky if we covered one call a week.
This increases, if it increases to eighty-four five sixty on your budget, would you have a problem? Would it be difficult to find people to work full time?
I don't believe so, but we can contact the ones that were interested in the first place. And, and discuss, hey, that, um. Definitely having, having that extra money to pay the employees. It's hard to, like I said, it's hard to stare someone at fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour with no insurance or benefits. Expect them to do that job, um, with the hours that we do, um, money talks. Um, we can go to surrounding agencies and get a dollar, two dollars, up towards six dollars more an hour. Regional more than what's.
Really?
Yeah.
So we gotta consider, but if, uh, same thing's happening with the least of our events, you know, Councilton offers the patrolman a significant amount of money more than he goes to Councilton, now Fairhaven shortly, so. Are we gonna make sure that we don't poach from other squads? I mean, it's kind of like a self-licking ice cream, right?
Um.
Stop playing piano, boy.
Yeah, so it's like, we gotta get more people. Who's training them? Uh, are some of this money gonna go fund the training, uh, new people? That's, that's the bottom line. The same thing with road foot, you know?
We have three people in our CMT class this summer. We have three more people in EMT class this fall.
Good, good.
Um, so there's, there's one. As far as the budgeting, there might be a half a dozen people in District Ten that don't work more than one agency. Everyone works at different agencies. Um, they bounce, so regional people work at Fairhaven, Fairhaven. With, you know, everyone bounces everywhere because there's not enough EMS staff in the state, hence why they're pushing the training. Um, this last class, um, the last two classes, I was able to get all students in for free. Um, so Polley didn't have to pay out any type of pocket funds to get them trained. And the best part is they came to Polley to train, um, and then you kind of sweep them in, these little men.
Yep, good.
Get them, get them in to say the things to get comfortable and they end up staying. Um, but then everyone talks and, and like I said, unfortunately, money talks, so.
Yeah, that's my mind. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks for the.
Thank you very much. Then, has that helped our, you know, helps us?
Any questions?
This is a part of the budgeting process.
Yeah.
They did do, the rescue did do a great job training my rec kids. I had them, um, go to the rescue squad. Maybe I had twenty kids and, um, wasn't Chad, was it Chad?
I didn't check.
It was checked, he canceled once, but yeah, it was Chad. And he did a nice job training all the rec kids for the summer, going over rescue, to get on and A B K P and testing it. So definitely considering whether they want to do it, but that type of stuff, so hopefully we keep continuing to do that too.
Yeah.
We kind of, well, it was a good job.
Four junior members right now. Two of them that actually are EMTs, they just can't run until they're eighteen, so.
One more question.
Yep.
So other than the fact that we've always done it this way, what is the biggest beef uh, with the board and directors in the LLC going into the town?
Um, I think it's more so, like I said, the building doesn't cost much, it's not the issue.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that the town wants, wants to take it on, but, you know, you associate fire and rescuers, so.
Tell emergency management's under that umbrella.
I'm sorry.
And it's kind of hard when everything is, and this, and, and, and party emergency management team is over here and over here and over here. So we're just, I'm just, we're just thinking about the town, the people of Polley, you know, where everything's consolidated and there's something like this storm and they're really knocking things out and had something catastrophic happen. Tussle down here in the flooding and people are trapped or get, you know, with, with the ice jams. You have some hypothermia, you know, situations like that and it's just, we're all right there.
So is there any financial benefit to remaining in your own corporation? Yeah, that's what, right. You're, you're a.
They're an LLC.
So what is it? Is there a financial advantage?
No, you weren't an LLC. What? You were?
Uh, I think you're a corporation.
Right, yeah.
You're an corporate. So I'm saying, what is the financial benefit of remaining in corporation? That's my question that I want to answer for. They don't want to do it, but what financial benefit do they gain by staying down and not coming under the?
Well, the building was made for.
It isn't about the building. We can still do it under the bill, you know, you can still stay in that building if we work it out.
Are you talking about becoming municipal?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
That, or I don't know.
Leaving the corporation and becoming up under the umbrella of the municipality of the town of Polley.
Okay, I thought you were just.
Emergency management coordinator, the fire chief, the rescue coordinator.
I, that would be something I'd have to run by them.
Could you do that?
Yeah, um, our next. I'll send out an email. It's like we're not meeting again until we're like in March, so.
Okay.
Well, we gotta get this budget done.
Yeah, we gotta get the budget done. Anyway, but ask them that question, how would they feel about just becoming, coming under the municipality umbrella of the town of Polley?
Yeah.
It's more for emergency management.
Yeah, and it might benefit for some funding for everything.
Exactly what you're correct. It might benefit largely for some funding.
All the information that came in Friday, I don't know if you all got that because it came just from V L C G and it's combining, as you said, the EMS, the fire departments and everything for the funding.
Money available, which if you're off on the, you know, escort.
You might be left out from getting, you know, incorporating some money and that eighty-four thousand for two or three years might help taxpayers. It jumps down and you get another forty-two thousand from the state for, uh, rescue. And we, and the taxpayers of Polley don't have to pay for two or three years. Then we can slowly budget that up and it isn't a total shock.
He's got to justify the budget increase for the. So.
There are, I'm just.
I always think.
No, and I have applied numerous grants, um.
This could help you though, I think, if you work.
A private?
Yeah.
Um, for profit, with a lot of, I mean, non-for.
You do, okay.
Yeah. Um, so they are out there. A lot of it recently has been employee camp. It was, it's been an employee camp.
Oh, I see how they do it, all right.
So we haven't had the employees to get the funding that we need.
To have larger funding.
For the grants. We don't have the call volume to reflect for some of the grants that are coming down now.
We could.
Um, we could if we had the employees.
I see. You got a bit of a.
You're putting in a shift return.
All right, now I understand that better.
I can definitely, and I have, applied for numerous grants in the past, um, especially during the pandemic. We qualified for almost all of them. Um, but being a not-for-profit, we do qualify for quite a bit. Um, as far as that goes, so I mean, we do have stuff available to us. It's different from municipalities as far as funding roads and grounds, some kind of stuff like that. They're, they're out there.
I wonder if, I don't know if we lose that if we came under the municipality.
We would, because we wouldn't be.
So, so as we, like somebody used to study this.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah.
First, see, see which one is better? Which one we could get more down for the bucks, let's see.
Right. And as far as becoming municipal, I personally don't have an issue with it, but then again.
Well, could you run it by them anyway?
Absolutely, yeah.
You can say.
Definitely, um, because there's benefits to, to both being private and municipality. So there are, it's, it's an option, definitely.
Okay.
Um, but in the.
Yeah, we gotta.
We gotta get our second count out.
Yeah, I see the position you're in now, even with the funding, you don't have the personnel. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
No problem.
That wasn't bad.
Good job.
You can stay if you wish, or you can, you just can, we're gonna go right on with our, with our meeting, town managers report. Wait, do we have a hand up? We have a hand up? We got a couple of hands up, okay?
Mark.
Mark, we'll go Mark first and then, Mark and then Alex.
Um, thank you for the town, so we're, we're wondering why Hampton Towns up, so down on Route Thirty-One, we had a street come down and block part of the road and Southampton Towns up there, so that explains why we got a wall of trucks there, but there's, uh, put some cones out uh, for safety at night, which is very helpful with the reflective strip on it, so we were saying someone was gonna get hurt and those cones are ready for pickup if, uh, anybody hasn't noticed.
Will you summarize that? I didn't understand.
If you put your cones out, just wait.
Wait, Thirty-One South, is that?
Right down here.
Yeah, yeah, I asked the guys to go put some cones out. A neighbor had put some cones out and I wanted some cones with reflectors on there because the lines were.
He was thanking you guys for doing that as, as the way I. It's right by Mark's house, that's where it was, and they called me and I said, tell you, Nicky, like, what happened to South Polley, but then I realized there were wires that we couldn't touch. I said, we can't do it in this town.
Mark, sorry, you were a little, little muffled there, so. But, all right, anything else, Mark?
We wanted to thank them and let them know that they're ready to be picked up.
They're ready to get their cones.
Okay, they're ready to be picked up.
I think they're gone. Yeah, I think Gary and Kevin would have picked them up.
Gary and Kevin picked them up. Okay, thank you, Mark. Alex?
Thank you. Um, my question was sort of being asked, um, I was going to ask what would some of the financial benefits be of different, um, different structuring? And I just wanted to point out, um, because that question was kind of answered, but I did want to point out that just because an organization isn't profitable, um, doesn't mean that it's not a for-profit. Um, an LLC, that structure is a for-profit business. Um, so there are lots of different organizations, organizational structures that you could pick that have different tax liabilities, that do have different availabilities for grants. I've been really grant hunting a lot for my own business, which is a for-profit, and I can say for sure that there's a ton of grants out there that are for not-for-profits and for municipals and, um, I'm definitely happy to, um, help if that's something that you need some, you know, folks in the community to help, uh, assist you guys with. But I just wanted to point that out just because there definitely does seem to be a difference in availability of, of grants for for-profits versus nonprofits and just want to break out that misconception.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, everyone. We'll go on to town managers. Um. I mean, since we had a meeting last week, I don't have a, a comment for it.
Hmm.
Um, I thought we were gonna concentrate mainly on the budget stuff. All right, we'll go down then, translate, I'm sorry, which we did as we know in our last meeting, but I think we're in the point where we're gonna be going into personnel matters. Yeah, we're, we're going to executive session now on the budget. We wanted to talk, talk to Christine about the rescue squad. And we have good understanding on that. And any other budget discussions? Outside of executive session with personnel? I don't think, I haven't changed any of the numbers since when we last met, um. Okay. So the board orders, did anybody get a chance to look at them yet? So we'll, we'll look at them then a little bit later. Public comments and concerns, a limit of fifteen minutes on that. Anybody have any comments or concerns? Yes?
Um, this is a continuation of the Wednesday, December fourteenth, um, budget meeting. And, um, Nan Greer wasn't able to attend tonight, but she asked me to ask you about the health insurance for employees and whether the town covers just the employee or the employee and its, uh, dependents.
It's the employee and then employee dependents.
Okay, so it's both, okay.
Hmm.
Okay, and, um, my question is, um, can you update, um, the citizens on the status of the tax agreement with regenerative land holdings?
Well, we haven't. Um, I actually, uh, was playing voice, uh, what is it called? Voice gag?
Voice tag.
Help one tag with the town attorney a- about that, um, question because he was putting together, uh, it, the board's, um, direction, putting together a draft where it working responds to what, uh, regenerative land holdings has initially asked for. Um, so I, I do know, I have a voicemail on my phone from this evening that I haven't listened to yet from the attorney, but we are playing O-TAG on that.
So he's currently putting together some sort of an agreement based on, uh, your discussion?
Correct. Well, it, it's, it's, it wouldn't be the final agreement, it's something you're gonna take in.
But the, and that's something that's going to go before the voters anyway, I think.
Oh, before, yeah, oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we've finally come to a final agreement, yeah.
Okay, and my other question is, um, do you know off the top of your head what the balance of the ARCA funds is? And do you plan on holding any public meetings to get input on how the funds can be spent?
Um, I don't have the updated figure in front of me for that, but I can circulate it to you tomorrow if you'd like.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Um, yeah, do you plan on holding any public meetings to get input on how the funds can be spent? Because I know surrounding towns have been doing that.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, we, we have had some folks come in, um, and request some funding, um. But I don't know, I don't think we've had a special meeting on it per se. Well, no, we haven't had any special, we, we we haven't been concentrating on the having of funds lately because we've been extremely busy with getting our road, uh, foremen. You know, we going down other, working with the, uh, regenerative lane group. And all that stuff, so we, we will get back to the ARCA funding, yes, let's take a look at it. I mean, it is, there's a lot happening, as you know.
Yeah, well, I know.
But that's, that's, uh, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Take a look.
Thank you.
Anyone else got anything? Um, Nick? Nick's with your hand is up? Um, Sarah, Sarah Polkey is looking at a, at a couple of different projects with myself and with our, with the village's superintendent of the DPW. Any? That it? Nick, sir? All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I forgot to give Paul credit for doing a lot of scrambling with getting insurance and stuff so that we could use these quickly acquired assets. Uh, I probably almost got him to the point of annoyance with my back and forth. Well, you made it, you made it happen, you got the truck, thanks to Ron's smart thinking with the contact with V Trans. And, uh, I plugged the crap out of him.
Yeah, don't start being my.
To make sure we were. It's, this is not a suck-up thing, though. To make sure we were legal, so, this, this is not a suck-up thing, though. I promise you, he, he was hustling, he was on the phone, off the phone, and thanks also to Ron before he goes for trying to secure a backup grant.
Right.
Not sure if anyone knows or knows that, so, I think credits due.
Right, thank you. All right, that's it then, and then, now we have an executive session for budget discussions. And that executive session is based on personnel in the budget.
Motion going.
We'll, we'll make a motion, we'll, we, we, give everybody a.